To the Charlton Board of Select meeting for March eighth, two thousand and twenty-two, I'm gonna call it to order. And we'll start with the Pledge of Allegiance.
Pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
So, um, we have the minutes to our last meeting on February eighth.
Make a motion to accept the minutes as written.
I second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Alright, Basha, community relations announcement.
There's two pages full announcements for tonight. Nomination papers are viable in Charlton Town Clerk's office starting February seventh. They do back to Town Clerk no later than March eighteenth at five P M. Uh, all that information is on our website, W W W town of Charlton dot net. Uh, there are still seats available. Uh, Charlton Town Election Day, Saturday, May seventh, from eight to eight P M. at Heritage School. Uh, volunteers solve for government study review committee. The Board of Selectmen seeks residents to review the two thousand and sixteen government study white paper report and report on progress made and further changes that should be considered. Those interested in serving on this committee should submit a talent bank form to Executive Assistant Mary Devlin at mary.devlin@townofcharlton.net. All that information also is on the website. There is one opening on the Council of Aging. Anyone interested should submit a talent bank form found online to the Board of Selectment at thirty-seven Main Street, Charlton, Mass., or email marydevlin@townofcharlton.net. Uh, library announcements, featured program and events. Uh, Thursday, March twenty-fourth at six-thirty, uh, library is looking for you to join to learn all about raised bed gardening with Kate and Eric from Blackstone Valley Veggie Gardens. This is going to be about how to build, fill, side, and plant, um, the gardens. Featured resources. Did you know we carried a discount pass for Isabella Stewart Garden Museum? Each pass allows up to four people for five dollars each. Um, it's such a beautiful place to visit at time, at this time of the year. This pass is available to all library cardholders. Hmm, visit our website, charltonlibrary.org to view all of our events and offerings and to register for programs or get a library card. I just wanna, as a side note on that, I did visit the library and I didn't know there is a whole room full of books of all different kinds and sorts, and this is all for the donation, so if everybody is looking for the books, old-fashioned way, uh, library has them and you can get them for just a small donation. Dudley Charlton Educational Foundation announcements. The pitch tournament is postponed. We didn't have too, um, too much of the participation, weather and everything that's going on, but it will be postponed and to the further notice. Two thousand and twenty-two grant cycle, this is important. So, uh, Dudley Charlton Educational Foundation is now accepting the applications. Um, the flyer for that is on the D C F website. Uh, for, for, this is for all the educators and anybody who's interested in donated or is looking for a grant. Uh, Dudley Charlton Educational Foundation has the hero program going on, which was a huge success for now. We had people that, um, that went to all the local schools and delivered the, the small little talk of appreciation to all the nurses that worked so hard through the COVID. We had a little, um, you know, coffee mugs made and everybody was very happy about that. So, there's this program going on and you can, um, learn about it on the D C F website. That's all I got.
We'll move on to appointments and resignations.
First is an appointment for the Treasurer Collector Administrative Assistant position. Attaches a request from Lynn Dyer, Human Resource Director, recommending the board appoint Melissa Iozzo as the Treasurer Collector Administrative Assistant. This position is a non-union position with a rate of twenty-two fifty-five per hour for thirty-eight hours a week with a start date of March seventh, two thousand and twenty-two. There were twenty-five applicants with, um, interviews offered to ten. Two declined interviews and three that were interviewed were from Charlton. Ms. Iozzo is the most qualified candidate and I'd recommend the board make the appointment.
Do we have a motion?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Welcome, Melissa Iozzo.
I'm assuming she probably started yesterday?
Yes, yes.
Okay, very good, welcome.
Uh, appointments for the Government Study Committee. Attached are requests from Tom Sirius, Jerry Dobell, and Jeanine Costello seeking to be appointed to the Government Study Committee. I'd recommend the board make the appointments.
I actually read their applications and they're all very well qualified. Um, do we have a motion?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Chair votes aye.
Next is for the Insurance Advisory Committee. Attached is a request from Finance Director Ashley Oberzett asking the board to appoint Donna Folio as the retiree to replace William Fedard as he, as he no longer wishes to sit on the board. I'd recommend the board make the appointment.
Do we have motion?
So moved. Donna certainly has her history in town.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Chair votes aye.
Next is for Cultural Council. Attached is a request for, from David Schiller seeking to be appointed to the Cultural Council. Cultural Council is recommending the board make the appointment and I concur. The expiration date for the appointment would be June thirtieth, two thousand and twenty-three.
Do we have motion?
Oh, yeah, I, yeah, move, I move.
Yeah, so moved, so no, so moved, but my only quid, he also checked off economic development. But was he hoping to get on that too, or?
Appears to be more in the kind of.
So, right now, um, we will forward this to the Economic Development Commission for review, ensure that we actually have a open position and then, uh, bring it back for recommendation.
So we have a motion and a second?
Yes.
Um, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Chair votes aye.
Next is an appointment to the Municipal Building Committee. Attached is a talent bank form from Adam Kelly seeking to be appointed to the Municipal Building Committee. Municipal Building Committee met and would recommend the board make the appointment. The term of appointment would be June thirtieth, two thousand and twenty-two. I would recommend the board make that appointment.
So moved.
Second.
Very, very, very strong background.
Aye.
Steve?
Aye?
Alright, last appointment. Uh, Old Home Day Committee. Attached is a talent bank form from Bradford Howard, Jeanine Costello, and Jeanine Castello seeking to be appointed to the Old Home Day Committee. I recommend the board make the appointment.
So moved.
Uh, second, pleasure.
All in favor?
Aye.
Alright.
Chair votes aye.
Jumping ahead of myself here.
I have, I have a question, so would that be, I, I mean, I would like to meet all these people. Can it be in any shape, some shape or form possible for, if we are appointing these people, for them to actually come in front of us? I'd like to meet these people. That's the opportunity for us to meet them.
I mean, I think that ask them to come, like, we're.
Like right here.
We're very, very happy to always meet them. Maybe we can make it a point to visit one of their meetings or something and do it that way. Um, not, not everybody wants to sit in front of, um, this woman.
But I want, but the people to meet, I want people to meet them.
Well, we'll make it a point, we'll go visit everybody new, you and I. We'll go to all their meetings, we'll plan.
This is an example, this is an example. I'm very happy about this long list of people that don't.
If anybody from the town of Charlton wants to join any of our committees, you get a personal greeting from us.
That's it.
Okay, now we move on to our resignations.
Very good. So, um, first is from the Council on Aging. We've been notified by Elaine Materis, Director of the Council on Aging, that Joan Malinowski has resigned from the Council on Aging effective February ninth, two thousand and twenty-two for personal reasons. The board should accept her resignation, a letter thanking her for her services in your signed folder. We have placed the opening on the town's website and Facebook page.
Right, do we have motion? I move. For sadness.
So moved, so, I'm, going back, did we pass over Bradford Howard?
Nope, he was part of the, um, Old Home Day Committee appointment list.
So we did too, but what about the other things that he checked?
There's two.
What's that?
There was, oh, oh, two, yeah.
Yeah, but he checked off Historical Commission and D M Auditor as well.
Yeah, right now we don't have openings for those two positions.
Okay, okay, I just wanted to make sure.
Yep.
He seemed like a really good guy. I, I was talking to him at the Old Home Day. Very committed to giving back.
So, um, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Um, chair votes aye, um, unanimous, passes unanimously, thank you for your service.
Alright, the next is a resignation from the Highway Department. Attaches a letter from Jake Hosegood resigning from the Highway Department effective February twenty-second, two thousand and twenty-two due to accepting employment elsewhere. The board should accept his resignation and a letter thanking him for his services in your signed folder.
Do we have a motion?
Yeah, so moved.
I second.
All in favor?
But, um, for discussion though, this seems, this seems to be one of these coming up every meeting from the Highway Department, just for discussion.
Lot to jobs out there right now.
What's that?
Lot to jobs out there right now.
Yep, that could be a reason. Just, just to note it.
For the record, I, they were all offered, um, interviews, um, exit interviews and we didn't get any information.
Yep.
As far as I know anyways. Okay. One more resignation?
Yeah, and the final resignation is from the Cultural Council. Attaches an email from, um, Amelia Terrell resigning from the Cultural Council. The board should accept her resignation and a letter thanking her for her services in your signed folder.
So, do we have a motion?
I move.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye. Steve?
Aye.
Chair votes, chair votes aye, passes unanimously. Thank you, everybody, for your service and welcome all of our, um, new appointments. Okay, um, so we'll move on to new business.
Alright, the next, first one is the Charlton Lions Club. They have a request for a toll road. The Charlton Lions Club is requesting permission to hold a toll road in Charlton Center, the intersection of Main Street and Masonic Home Road, on Saturday, April thirtieth, two thousand and twenty-two from nine A M. to noon. The rain date being May seventh, two thousand and twenty-two. This request was forwarded to Police Chief Dowd, who is in support of the toll booth contingent upon the following safety precautions. All volunteers must wear bright colored vests while soliciting donations. Orange traffic cones must be set out on Main Street and Masonic Home Road for a distance of not less than fifty feet on each representative way prior to reaching the toll station. A minimum of five traffic cones on each roadway should be put in place at a distance no greater than ten feet apart. Signs warning voluntary toll booth ahead must be erected on both Masonic Home Road and Main Street, not less than seventy-five feet from the toll station, and no stopping of cars or impeding the flow of traffic in any way. Money raised from this event will be used for helping the community. I recommend the board approve this request.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Chair votes aye, passes unanimously. Okay, we have the transfer of common victual license to Family House of Pizza and Seafood.
Alright, just one second. Alright, so we have been notified by Keith Gervais, owner of Family House of Pizza and Seafood, that he has sold the business to Saint Maria and Saint Mina, Inc., Rabe Esperim Manager. Attached is the completed paperwork requesting transfer of ownership of the common victual license to Saint Maria and Saint Mina, Inc. I'd recommend the board approve the license as requested.
Do we have a motion to approve the new license?
I move to approve the license as requested.
Second, second.
All in favor?
Is, is there a, um, is there a Board of Health inspection or anything?
Yeah, so the Board of Health licenses will have to be applied for separately.
Okay, alright.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Chair votes aye, passes unanimously. Okay, we have, uh, requests for permit fee refund for Prunia Plumbing and Heating.
Attached is a letter from Norman Prunier from Prunier Plumbing and Heating asking the board to consider refunding his permit fees in the amount of two hundred and fifty dollars for permitting and a hundred and fifty dollars, or for plumbing and a hundred and fifty dollars for gas at a total of three hundred and seventy-five dollars. Mr. Prunier was granted these permits on October twenty-eighth, two thousand and twenty-one. Shortly after, he suffered a back injury which left him unable to work and ultimately has forced him into retirement. No work or inspections were performed on the permits. New plumbing, a new plumbing company requested a new permit and was issued by the Building Department to perform the work. This, the Building Department has confirmed that Mr. Prunier did receive the permits but did not perform any work. Per the board's policy for inspectional services fee fine appeal, the applicant must file an appeal within fifteen working days after the issuance of a fee or, fee or fine. Mr. Prunier, unfortunately, due to his injury, was unable to meet this deadline. I would ask the board to consider Mr. Prunier's request and allow the refund of three hundred and seventy-five dollars he is requesting.
I, I, I move that we refund the money to Mr. Prunier for the fees.
I second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Just say aye.
Aye.
Chair votes aye unanimously, um, I think it's the fair thing to do, so.
Yeah, absolutely.
Yeah, medical reasons.
Yep.
Okay, and I think we, all we have left is the, um, we're closing the town meeting warrant?
So, tonight you're scheduled to close the annual town meeting warrant. Below is a list of articles for the board's consideration to be included in the warrant that have been submitted. Uh, Article one would be elections, Article two, town reports, Article three, litigation, Article four, appropriation of funds for unpaid bills of a prior fiscal year, Article five, inter-intra-departmental transfers for F Y two thousand and twenty-two, uh, Article six, town budget, Article seven, water department budget enterprise fund, Article eight, sewer department budget enterprise fund, Article nine, capital items and related contracts, Article ten, transfer of funds to and from stabilization fund account, Article eleven, cemetery perpetual care, Article twelve, revolving funds, Article thirteen, uh, request from the, from this Council on Aging for a loan authorization to acquire property at a hundred and seven Dresser Hill Road and improvements for the development of a senior center. Article fourteen, to adopt M G L Chapter fifty-nine, Section five, four, to establish a thousand dollars as a minimum value of personal property subject to taxation. That's from the Board of Assessors. Article fifteen, um, was a request that was recently forwarded by Chairman Barowski to adopt M G L Chapter forty, Section eight J, to formally establish a commission on disability in the town of Charlton. Article sixteen is a request from the Animal Control Officer that animal, for a animal control bylaw amendment. Essentially, this was a request to, uh, increase the permit fees, but we may be looking also at a, at transitioning that to a policy versus a bylaw. Article seventeen was the zoning bylaw amendments as been working on by the, by the Planning Board. Article eighteen was a planning board amendment for zone change to property on Trolley Crossing. Article nineteen is a, a zone change for a property on L. Stevens Road, and Article twenty is the town road acceptance of Saint Mary's Way, and that one still has some outstanding issues to, um, take care of, but, um, we'll keep that on the warrant until it's too late for them to meet those requirements. So, I'd recommend the board approve the draft list of articles as presented, close the annual town meeting warrant tonight.
Is that one motion or two?
Uh, that could be one.
Okay, do we have a motion to approve the draft list of articles and close the annual town meeting warrant tonight? Now, remember, this can be modified, this just really is the formality of the process.
This is just a lineup, right?
It locks, yeah, it locks in the articles that, so no more can be added unless the board votes to open the warrant back up. Uh, but at any time the board can vote to strike any proposed article.
Because there were a couple that we were waiting for.
Yeah.
Yep.
For a full group, for a discussion, okay, I'd second that.
Yeah.
Right, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, chair votes aye, passes unanimously. Do, we have any committee reports?
No committee reports. Oh, I'm sorry, that's your committee. I was thinking of other committees.
Other than the Old Home Day Committee, have we, hasn't been any meetings?
E D C had one the other.
Yeah, that, yeah.
I, I didn't, I was down, I was, that was downstairs at Old Home Day.
Yeah, so, uh, E D C had a meeting, so, um, they may have seen, we posted out on the town social media page, we came up with a kind of a, a one-page white paper for the town as far as some of the economic development opportunities that are available in town that kind of, you know, just kind of like as a, as a handout to, to give to people who may be interested in developing in Charlton. Uh, we're working, the, we're working on trying to come up with a separate dedicated page solely dedicated, solely for economic development outside of just being a, a regular town page with, you know, committees and for it to be kind of a little bit more robust and some more information.
Would it have like all the properties currently for sale in the town or something like that? Like actually interactive and usable?
What I think we'll have to try to do is find a way to link to an active database because trying to keep that list updated may be a bit time-consuming and will go stale pretty quickly, especially in the current market.
Or realtor that, you know, or some.
Yeah, so that, we're, we're in development with that, but we, they had a discussion with, um, some interested, or developers in town about potential zone changes that they want to bring, bring to the table on properties in proximity to Route twenty, and it was more of a discussion around the E D C being a, uh, a supportive force as it goes through the process.
Like a resource, or a resource for those businesses per se. So that, that website will be linked from the town to the, to the separate website?
Yeah, so it'll be, it'll be on the town's website, but it may just be, it may link over to a different page.
Yeah, yeah, so they can go, there may be linked to the e-permitting and all that, yeah, sure.
Trying to find the best way to do it.
Oh, yeah.
And it's, there's no, there's no magic.
Trial and error, right?
Yeah, you gotta move things around and figure out how they can work best.
No, we're so pro-business, so it's good to be.
And then when people start complaining, you know, you didn't do a good job.
Exactly, or at least they're paying attention.
Right.
Um, that's good.
So, I, yeah, I don't think there's much else going on with other, um, so, under, um, Board of Second Policy Review, the new federal grant policy and procedures, um, that's actually really, uh, good, not good, very well-written.
It was, uh, it was something that was picked up by, by our auditor, you know, especially going through and this, you know, when we were dealing with cares and stuff, we were going off of really best practices that were out there, but we didn't have a formal policy, so now we want to make sure that we actually have a formal policy on the books related to this.
That's good.
And it's very well-written, so, um, good job, Ashley, and I guess the auditors. Um, so do we have to vote to approve that?
Yes.
Do I have a motion to, um, uh, accept and approve the new policies and procedures surrounding federal grants?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye?
Aye.
Chair votes aye, passes unanimously. Okay, um, so, we, we don't, we don't have goals and objectives this week, um.
Well, I mean, just, they, then just updates as to what I've been doing, um.
How to administer a report.
Yeah, uh, I, I know at least relative to that, I know, well, one of the ones on here is, um, you know, transparency, and we have been working on rolling out the new budgeting software. We, uh, we pushed out kind of initial, we've gotten a lot of the backend built into it and have kind of pushed out initial budgets to the departments to try to work that internally, so that way, once we kind of get to a finalized version, we'll be able to have that, that new permitting software open and available online for people to, to see, you know, prior year look backs and, and how their money's spent, so. A little bit of an update as far as that, that goal. And I can go right into my, my report if you want. Alright, so as requested by, uh, by Selectman Singer at the last meeting, just a quick update on the crumbling concrete. Um, so right now it's just kind of meandering its way through the, uh, through the state legislature. Not much to really report on right now, but, uh, essentially right now it's in the Joint Committee on Environment, Natural Resources, and Agriculture. Uh, that was assigned back on March twenty-ninth of two thousand and twenty-one. They did finally have a hearing on that bill on December twenty-eighth of two thousand and twenty-one, and right now there's a reporting deadline from that committee of Thursday, March thirty-first. And that was just extended the other day, was originally February twenty-eighth, so. We'll see, uh, see if they just extend that or if it actually makes any, any movement. As far as development, you guys may have noticed, uh, there's some groundwork happening over at the Amazon facility, uh, also at the L N G. facility, uh, down on South Bridge Road. So, as these projects move forward, we're gonna be trying to provide most updated information that we have on the town's webpage. Uh, I know Amazon is gonna be sending me over regular reports to just put right out there, and, um, should be the same for the L N G. facility, and we're, we're hoping that when the two forty-one Sturbridge Road project finally moves forward, which it should soon, um, that we'll be able to provide those updates as well. Uh, we have the Small Business Grant Program Information Session. That's gonna be tomorrow night, Cornerstone Bank, for anybody who's interested. Uh, just want to thank Cornerstone Bank and Sabrina Webb for, uh, coordinating this event, hopefully, hoping for a good turnout, some good questions. So, the Stafford Street Corridor Study, so I did just get a, um, a first draft of the study back from Vanessa Associates, who's really kind of, who's looking of that, the safety improvements that can, uh, happen along that corridor. Some very interesting recommendations, and, um, I'll invite him to a future meeting to kind of go through those. Um, but it was, it was, it was, uh, say, it has definitely not finalized, and still some feedback to go back and forth, but I found that, you know, some of the recommended upgrades of what could be done at, um, you know, at the Center Depot in Stafford Street were very, very interesting.
Wow.
Okay, can you, can you share that with us?
Yeah, um, I, I was waiting for, for it to be finalized, I actually just got the report in, um, on, yesterday that had the final estimate, or that had estimated cost totals of what some of the improvements may be, so. Had some questions about a few things, so hopefully we can just clean them up, but, uh, what, I'll just say, and. Alright, there we go. I'm putting the lights to sleep.
We're not moving around. We're not, we're not, yeah, yeah.
What are, what are the solutions that, that they're looking at as far as Stafford Street, Center Depot, Road, but it's actually turning that into a roundabout?
Huh.
So, what the estimated price total would be, what that design would be, you know, may still have a lot of development to go, but I think that's one solution that had, I, I'd never heard of for that, for that intersection, it'd be interesting, interested to see what it would actually look like, so.
There might be enough space there.
There's, there's some, there's some, quite a bit of eminent domain in that one.
Yeah, on those.
But there is, I mean, there is, there is vacant area around it, and I'm not sure how much you actually have to take to make that work, but to keep traffic moving.
I mean, it only needs to be single lane, I mean.
Right.
Huh, interesting.
So, uh, I did ask to see if he had any preliminary designs on that, and we'll, I'll have him here at a meeting either virtually or in person to kind of go through the findings.
I mean, as long as I can remember, since I was a little kid, that's been like the most dangerous.
Oh, no, okay, oh, I'll be hearing about it all the time. Roundabout is, that is interesting. I, I guess if you were coming down the hill in the winter, you could still skid around the roundabout rather than stop at a light, if, if they were behind that.
At least then there wouldn't be anybody parked in the middle of the roundabout. So, one of the good, you know, one of the, the goals of this study really is, is that if we can come up with some conceptual plans, that the next phase would essentially be to do a, um, would be to go to C M R. P. C. and have them kind of, uh, look at that, look at these findings again and then be able to take that study and move it along to Mass. D O T. to get it on, either, get it onto the, um, Transportation Improvement Program or apply for a Mass. Works grant that could go into the design of these. So, a couple of different options to try to move these.
But it would ultimately be their project, not, or, or.
It's a town road, but if it's a, but because of the. It's a town road, but if it's a, but because of the high crash volume, it becomes a priority from the state level to mitigate that issue.
That's good.
Good, good, that's good news. Thanks, Andrew.
So Shepherd Hill, you, you guys may have heard too that they have been invited into the eligibility period for the MSBA, for the Mass School Building Authority for Shepherd Hill Regional School. The eligibility will, or eligibility period will commence on September first, two thousand and twenty-two, which will include a feasibility study to determine the appropriate course of action, whether or not that be renovation or new construction. And also, um, they'll have to secure the appropriate funding mechanism to, um, walk into the, to walk into the program. So as I get more information, I'll provide it to you guys, but just as you know that now that they've been invited into the program, there's going to be some, some steps that they're going to have to comply with, especially financial. So want to just at least have it on your radar.
That's not something, even, even for the exercise to go through the cost?
As far as.
That doesn't need to go on the town warrant, right?
Not for.
As far as the study.
For this phase.
Not for the spor, not for the annual. Um, if anything, this would probably be something that'll have to be tackled at special town meeting in the fall, so. Again, true, I had some very preliminary conversations about ti, about timelines, so I'll wait until the school kind of gets their, their house in order before I bring anything up. That's, that's a final course of action. Uh, and then just finally budget timeline. So, um, the Finance Committee will be meeting on March sixteenth with the school departments that it's going to be reviewing their requests. And I'm sure the MSBA program will probably come up as part of that, part of that meeting. And then on March thirtieth, we'll be looking to provide, um, budget recommendations to them for consideration. So right after that meeting, we'll have a draft budget to the Board of Selectmen for the week of April fourth. So pencil into your calendars to have a joint meeting of the boards on Wednesday, April thirteenth, so that way both boards can review the budget and make recommendations and, and recommendations on what happens. And that's what I got for today.
Very good.
So our next meeting will be on March twenty-second, two thousand and twenty-two at six thirty PM. And if there's nothing else, do we have motion to close? I mean.
Motion to adjourn?
Second. All in favor?
All right.
Aye.
Night, everybody.
Night.